To you on some of the topics that we covered in the last week. So maybe you can. You can take a look at the videos, recording and the slides to catch up. So you know. Sorry, my voice is not so good today. So to know the purpose of the sessions is to get people who are preparing for AI 900 to come and share materials, input questions, and so that we can inspire people to discuss, practice, reason and sharing, because I do believe that, you know, learning by doing is really the way to make you remember. So in the past session in last week, we have cover vision and NLP. And this week will cover speech and some of the characteristic service workflow for reasoning which add Google into in depth. For just generally reminding, so Azure AI portfolio, they divide into three tiers. So easy to use medium, difficult to use and need expert level of development. And I believe the AI 900 exams from what I seen in other people feedbacks, because this exam is still in the beta stage, you know. So I'm trying to reading other people feedback, so they will quiz you a lot on Azure Machine Learning Studio. So Azure Machine Learning Service, which is this part, and some of the cognitive services. And yeah, so if you have some time, you can go through a computer vision services in Microsoft. And one thing I have to note that. You have these little red thing next to some of the area that I think the details see important and could be quiz you on. So pay attention to that. And in each session after that, they quizzes, these are for Microsoft, so you can click on the link and quiz yourself to see how much you understand of the session. And yes, I think that's it. And I'll hand over to Anne right now. Hello, Anne.
Okay, yes, hi everyone, and thanks Jen for hosting this event. And yeah, thanks everyone for joining today's section. And on this term, we're going to study about the speech service and conversation AI. So hi, hi Jen, so how am I going to do or share this? Shall I share my screen?
Yes, sure, of course, please go share. I think I enabled the sharing mode.
Right. So let's start. For this, first before we go into the material itself, let's just have a look at the exam outline. So over here, this is the part that should also overlap with some, some topics. Jam has, Jane has already covered last week in NLP, the speech service. However, the speech service is quite a huge topic to, to study for. And you can see later on, as I present to you the SDK, the COI and the API of this service. That's why we're going to split this service, tech this service away from NLP and join it with the conversation AI section down here. The topics we are going to cover will also include Q and A maker and a bot framework, which are two importance services in a conversation AI. I mean conversational AI. Okay. So you can have a look at the overview here. And. Over here, I want to draw your attention to this part, just the speech COI and the speech devices SDK and speech SDK itself. Yeah, I know the name is very confusing, but just for simplification, COI is the tool for you to, to write, to, to create your, to set up your speech services without writing any code. Okay. Yeah. So. You can have a look at this documentation later on. But to move on, if you see that some of your scenarios or some of your features are not covered inside the speech COI, you may need to use the speech SDK, okay, the speech SDK. So it's where you have to start using codes, you will need to install some of these. Software here. So depending on the language, programming language you use, you may need to download the corresponding SDK. And I have only checked through like the JavaScript and the C sharp ones. I see that some of the functionalities do not overlap. However, I don't think we will be tested on, on these specific differences, discrepancies between all these SDKs, so don't have to worry about that. What you have to really focus on is that is the scenario capabilities of the speech SDK. So these are the key, key users, yeah, to remember. From the speech SDK, they include a speech to text, specifically keyword spotting, also the meeting scenarios for conversation transcription. So this is also something worth to remember, because later on, when you move to conversational AI, this is, these are the users from the speech SDK that you have to remember, so that you can combine with. All this business under conversational AI to, to serve, to answer the users mentioned here inside the ally itself. Okay. So there is one important aspect about the speech SDK that you have to notice as well, that is, if your speech SDK doesn't have your desired scenario, you have to look into the REST API. So the REST API will cover the features that like asynchronous, okay, asynchronous speech to text transcription. So you, you may not have the live streaming of your audio or your video with audio enable data. And if you want to use a speech service on your pre-recorded audio files, you have to use the REST API itself. So the function, the specific functionality is best transcription. And you can also use REST API when you want to customize the functionalities, like the speech to text. You, you want to customize for your different recordings that do not fit into the. Language or the region, the language or the regionalities, the accents that provided by the speech service, then you will have to use a custom speech to text, same for custom text to speech. Okay. So. I will put all of these files, I mean, these links into the Google Doc here later, so that you can have a look at them. Then. Okay. So now back to the presentation. Let's just go through an overview of the functionalities of this speech service, because that's the part where you will be tested on. So you will need to be familiarized with speech recognition. This is the process whereby you inputs your audio and then the, the service should be able to verify your voice signature and authorize you to use the service. And then it should also help you to create like identity for your users based on the speech provided. And the common model that they use include acoustic model and the language model, you can go to the differences between these. But basically, this diagram will sum up the, these models and how they, how they are used together inside the service itself. And these are the common applications. Next is speech synthesis. This part is slightly harder than speech recognition. So for speech synthesis. You will have to go through like multiple steps to. Break down the text into words, into like recognize it tokens that the machine can understand. And then you, yeah, you need to break down further into phonemes, which are like. Like over here, I can have you see, see for yourself what phonemes are. So sorry, not here, phonemes here, they have, these are phonemes. So these consonants, these vowels are considered as phonemes in audio format, so the machine can understand. And finally, the system, the speech service will generate an audio wait form to output to the speaker or return to a file. Okay. And the whole entire process, you can have a look at this diagram here, can go through it step by step to, to familiarize with them. And the key, key thing that you have to remember is that inside the speech recognition, you will have both models at work, but inside here, the speech synthesis, you will only need the acoustic model, you don't. For linguistic features, you still need, but you, you do not, you do not use the same language model as the speech recognition, but a more complicated language model that will break into the, break the words into prosodic units and then phonemes. So it's a more complicated language model and some extra additional linguistic features. Speech on as itself, yeah, is of, is a very confusing, a very confusing service with various resources for speech itself and for the cognitive service resource that you have to use in combination with the speech service. And the key point to notice is when you use this resource, you can only manage the billing for, for the, the speech service itself. However, if you want to manage the billing of the speech service together with other cognitive services, you have to use the cognitive services resource. So yeah, I know the naming is confusing, as Jane has already mentioned so many times. So it's better to, that you remember these differences, yeah. Okay. Now moving on to those APIs, right? The APIs, the REST APIs of the speech service is where you go to if your speech CLI and your speech SDK do not have the functionalities that you seek for, then you have to go to the APIs, the REST API. And inside API, you have speech to text API and text to speech API, as well as best transcription. Okay. Yeah, inside the speech to text API, you have the transcription, real time transcription functionality embedded inside, but the best transcription is a separate API. Okay. For the speech to text, speech to text API, the model that Microsoft uses, the universal language model optimized for conversational users, scenarios and dictation. So conversational is like, you know, it two ways conversations, dialogues and dictation is like, if you just speak these words by yourselves, like you, you just read out loud some texts, basically. So there is no dynamic interactions between speakers for dictation. Okay. For the speech to text API, you also need to remember two modes of transcriptions that are provided, which are the real time and the best transcription. Okay. The differences are very simple to notice. Basically, the real time is when someone is speaking, when your input is being live stream from an audio source. However, for the best transcription is whereby you use a re-recorded audio file and your, and all your stream of audio is received asynchronously, okay, via the internet, via the URI or something of sorts. And next we move on to text to speech API. You will get to use speech synthesis process, which have already been provided by Microsoft. And you can see the supported languages here. I can't say that is includes. Every single, which is. On the planet is, is just a subset of the most popular and common languages we use in, in our daily lives. So you, you can have a look at them here. It's not, I mean, you may think that there are a lot of them, but to be honest, yeah, a lot of languages are missing out this list. Okay. However, the good thing about it is they give different voices for the same language. So both, for both genders and for different regions as well. These are all pretty 55 voices. They have different accents, regional pronunciations, and there are two types of voices that you will get as well. One is the standard voices from like real people from recorded, from the recordings of real people, and the other is neural voices. So basically, they are also based on the real voices, but they use neural networks to overcome some limitations like the noise or the. Maybe like the, the strange features, intonations, so that you can achieve a more natural sounding voice. And also, if you want to customize your voices, for example, if you just happen to want to record your own voice, you want to use your own voice inside your speech API, I mean your speech service, then you need to use this text to speech API and the custom voice functionality. Okay. And let's just have a look at the text to speech languages as well, whereby, yeah, the list is much shorter. It's like, there are just these many. Languages and voices supported by the text to speech API. Okay, so much fewer than your speech to text. And these are the standard voices. That you can use, they are like 70, more than 75 standard voices. So you, you may want to remember these numbers, because they may come out during the exam. And for customization. You have to make sure that your customized voice fit into these languages, otherwise the service may not be able to support your training either. Okay. And these are the. Those languages for the speaker that, that the service can recognize. And you need to use a speaker recognition APIs. Okay, they do not include the links here, so it's not, it's also not the main focus for our exam. Yeah, but you can, you can look them up out of curiosity. Okay. So let's just, yeah, I'm sorry, I already showed you the answer for the trivia. But one interesting fact I noticed from the documentation itself, is that there are only two languages. Microsoft was a part in the. For the bilingual model training, bilingual model training. So you have to be a Chinese speaking English, okay, so for you to be able to be bilingual inside of Microsoft service, I find it really funny. I'm not sure if you shared the same sentiments, but I think it's quite funny for me. And one key thing that you have to, one other key factor you have to notice is that you need to have at least 2,000 utterances to customize voice training inside the space REST APIs, speech service REST API. Okay. So now we have completed the first section of today is the speech service. Do you want to have any, have a short Q and A for this? Wait, stop sharing. Hello.
Yes, hello everyone. So one have question regarding to the Q and A. I think one thing could be really helpful, maybe we can call, we can again about the what concepts, what concepts you have today.
Sorry, could you please repeat? I think my voice is breaking for me.
Oh, okay, sure. I think it's a bad. Yeah, so maybe we can go over the NLP core concepts, because I see some new place today. So. Any questions? Or we can. And revise. Hey, Ali, yes, no worry. Yes, so, oh, and also to say that, because this quick, the two articles, AI 900, which is amazing, I really love how he summarized Azure Machine Learning. So. If you have time, definitely, without his lead on the medium on that. Saga, I was wondering if you would be interested in sharing with the group. If you like.
Yes, I will share it, I will share the link.
Sorry, again.
Yeah, yes. Zoom and, and we can put it into.
I, I think the voice is not so clear, but I think you, you can share the link, right? Okay, I think, okay, okay, I see. Okay, I see Saga message us that we can, he can share the link again with us on the Google Drive. So definitely check it out on the summarize of Azure Machine Learning Studio. So all right, sorry, Ben, I, sorry, I took your Q and A a little bit, so please continue.
Okay, so Major, if you guys have any questions regarding the speech service, or if not, maybe we can invite Trump to, to have like a revision section for the NLP.
Sure, let's have a quick revision of the NLP. Just a moment. And we can also have a touch on some of the machine learning algorithms too, because I only briefly talked about that last week. I didn't go into the depth details. So let's do that.
Jane, sorry for interrupting you about your news.
Oh, I didn't know that. I was talking to myself. Okay, okay, so let me. Let me talk again, the whole thing. So. Let's cover the NLP session. Oh, let me double check on the recording, we missed the first recording because of this. So. Yes, we are still recording, okay, we will have this lesson up in, on YouTube. So NLP, it will be a section in the AI 900. So, so far, what I, well, let, let's go to the agenda again, because we going to test the test, so we better have the agenda in mind to optimize it, right? So let's go to again, so everyone can remember what our goal is to pass the test. So on Azure websites, you can get this material, you can get this guideline, which tell you what they will be tested on and what you should study. So you know, if you look, if you browsing in here, three main concept is computer vision, which is about 20 to 30%. The reason why I say 20 to 30%, because you can see like here only 50 to 20s, but then if you look up, up here, they will be like breaking up in small parts in different areas. For example, ID, identify computer vision workflow, so for example like that. So main two areas, computer vision, natural language processing. And conversation AI, so it will be up to. 50%, 50% of the, of the materials already, another 50% will be on machine, machine learning studio and also on the small things such as decision workflows. You know, it's, it's not the main component from what I see in here, because if not repeating multiply, that how you, you know what they're going to test it on. So and also responsible AI, for sure, for sure, they will have it here and our class have a really nice material on that. So you can go through on it itself. And another feedback that I have heard from the classmate is about whether you use classification and when you use regression. So in different scenarios, which one you use? So that is something you need to pay attention to. So back to our NLP. Of course, before you learn, of course, before you know how to utilize any of the service, you need to know the core concepts. You don't see, remember cognitive service, you don't need to be a machine learning expert. Going back to this slide that I introduce you everyone from start, you don't need to be a expert. Is it easy to use? That the services that when, that advent have introduced us, it's easy to use, you don't need to be, you don't need to be a machine learning expert, what you need to be is a developer. Because most of the, most of the models there are custom or proven by Microsoft and basically you use it and you apply it to your own model. So remember that, that is one key, that different, that separate from cognitive services to order, to other services. All right. Sorry for straight off the topic a little bit, but I really want to make sure everyone remember this, because in the test that I have been through, there are different tier of service and in each of the senior scenario, it will be more like a case study in each of the scenario. Microsoft will ask me like, which service do I need to use to achieve the goal? So remember, you have to have the goal in mind and you need to, you need to know how to apply it. Okay, so let's go to the slide of. Natural language processing, okay. So let's have some Google in here, because I think Google, they giving out really. So let's have some Google in here because I think Google, they giving out really good image on that and I don't, I don't put it on my slide. My slides in more of the guide so that you can see it's okay. So this is the example of tokenization where you like breaking each word into into individual word. And so you can like separate word and stat to analyze on that and stemming and lemanization. So they will, because you know, in English, you have many form of a verb. So stemming and lemanization basically bring it back to the original form. So stemming is where you chop off, so running and grand, so it will chop off the words. So it's only the run and lemanization is where you go back to the root word. So entity extraction is where you identify the subject in the text and switch detection is where you recognize whether a word now participle and stuff and a sentence bearing detection. So the detect the complete sentence within the paragraph. Oh, and I want to everyone to pay attention to this. Let me show you how I discovered this first because I think showing everyone the whole process who have to unlock the discover topics that might be tested. So let's see, we go here, you can have the cognitive service, right? So let's select any random one. So the vision, because I covered it last week. So you go to the documentation, please let me know if you have issues with noise and sound and showing because I have a little bit of the I have a little bit of the issue in my internet. So pay attention to this concept, you know, the concept in each of the service. Because remember what AI 900 is, is basically the fundamentals. So they will test you on concept. They're not going to test you much on the implementation. Concept is what they will for sure, for sure testing you on. So pay attention on this. I already cover most of it. I did some editing this weekend on the computer vision and here's my blog. And I have shown everyone last week that how to access the material. Yeah, basically you click on AI 900. So I did some addition more on the vision services and also I'll do more on the speech and stuff. Basically, what here is where I get, I write out some of the concepts. You don't need to read my blog totally fine if you read here. I just basically copy and paste and give some example on my blog. But pay attention to this concept is very, very important because you know, all the, all the 900 tiers will be about a concept. I do, I will say for sure about that. All of it is about the concepts. You don't need to implement. You can see again, I'll show you the chick how I study for exams. Yeah, look at the book. None of the book here you ask you for implements is all about identify, describe. You see, so describe, identify is the main topic here. So pay attention to the concepts in each of the cognitive service and machine learning, Azure Machine Learning Studio. So you know, concept and concept, that's all you need to remember for this test. All right, so the top thing that I want to show you is this week Saga have a very, very nice link. Let's share with us on the machine learning studio. And I'm not sure if he can, Saga, can you brief us on your blog at all?
Yeah, I posted it on our chat. So.
Okay, do you want to go through on the content of it? I can go, I think.
Yeah, you can go through it.
Okay, sure. I really love it. And I think it's summarized very well. But I had issue with getting the link. Oh, okay. Okay. Wow, you did back five. Yesterday I only do, I only see part two or three. So I actually have no idea about other parts. So maybe we, we can read on it together. That's awesome, Saga. Thank you so much. So, okay. So again, for machine learning studio. So for machine learning studio, that part is 50% of the exam. There, there has been reports that people say that they will test on the input of of the flow. So you know, how do you choose the, how you choose the resource and the input? Like what input is support, which is a part of what I have highlighted here. But then this is only for cognitive service. Don't confuse it. The name is terrible. I'll repeat it like multiple times. If I need to, the naming is terrible. You just have to remember is there's no shortcut that it will be very, very confusing. So pay attention to the Microsoft naming. And you know, I have highlighted some of the support, progress support and side support for cognitive service. And here Saga had very nice outline on the resources and support that you need to know for the machine learning studio. So you know, computer resource, there are four different one. Compute instant compute cluster, inference cluster and attached compute. And I believe in our class, there was some outline of that. So my recommendation is for each of the lab, don't rush it. If you have time, I mean, like if you, if you're going to have the test next week, then you might have to rush it. But if you're gonna take it in September, don't rush it. If time in your lap, pay attention to the input because multiple times already I hear that it will be in the exam. Pay attention to the flow. It's all about identifying, you know, concept. You need to be able to know how it work. You don't need to implement things. You don't need to pay attention of like how to integrate it. What core concept is the main topic here? So go to his blog and see the computer, computer resource here, which one? And I think I'm just guessing. Compute, compute instance will be the main one here because for clustering, it will be an advanced topic and it might cover in like higher exam like AI 900. AI 100, sorry, just my token of guessing. Okay, so another, another part that will be covered in the exam, model evaluation metrics. I'll show you on the, where is this on the exam? Here. So this is, this will be the, the part in here, model evaluate symmetric for classification and regression. And I believe this part is for classification. So the link, I believe, the original link, I already posted on our channel and I'll post it again on the, on the section here because that will be one of the topics we will cover tomorrow on the, some of the classification and regression algorithm. But basically here, for evaluation, you need to look at accuracy, precision, recall and F1 score. And also Microsoft's. There is a guideline for that. Yes. So you see, here's the guideline for Microsoft. So first, how do you select learning algorithms? First, you need to know what you want to do with the data. And that will bring us to the TSC. And you love the Microsoft, they really make the TSC easy to use. So you know, in each of the scenario, remember digits, remember how Microsoft guide you to use this. So the question of how much and how many you use regression. Classification question, is it A and B? So remember these, remember these answer question. This will be very, very important for the exam. Okay, so after you get the algorithm, you have the model. You need to consider about additional requirements, accuracy, training time, linear number, number of parameters, number of features. And they also cover the business scenarios for the machine learning GSI, which is what most of the Microsoft's exam will be tested on. They give you a scenario, they will see how you solve it. Instead of they asking you on details of, like, you know, like, what is the name of this service? And what is the name of that service? And again, I have to confess that I have never taken the 900 tier. So maybe the 900 tier, they will be more linear on you. But for all the tiers, business scenarios is, is hilarious to sell you that. Okay, so since we have some extra time, let's have a look on the other link that Saga have prepared for us. Are you all right with that, Saga?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I can see that you have prepared computer vision service and detect phase and text analysis. Awesome. So please refer to his blog for more on this content. I think these are the topics we cover. So, okay, I have a new material for you guys. It's not complete yet because I'm still writing. I didn't plan on the presentation as, and I have some voice issue at the beginning, but I think this is starting to get better. Okay, this will be fun because it's a mock question. So you know, before you go back exam, I know you guys nervous and I know you guys want to do questions and quizzes. And sometimes Microsoft quizzes are very short. If you click on the, the link that I provide, it will be only like two, three question is so, is very very short. So that's why I want to make it more fun and more difficult. So I introduce my own set of questions. So definitely, you know, this is the authentic one for Microsoft. Please go through it. Don't skip it. Go through it as much as possible before the exam. Someone checking. Okay, I don't know. Google Drive link. Oh, it's here. So Saga, if you put it, if you click on here, it will be our Google Drive link. Yes, so. And from yesterday, a suggestion from the student leader of orientation. So I think I'll create a table to put all of the results because I have been sharing multiple times on the general and due to the select policy. So all of my results unfortunately got deleted. So I'll organize this also in the air table and I'll share it to everyone. So you guys can, so you guys can take a look at it. Okay, mock questions. So last week, if you haven't been here last week, what I often do is that I give everyone 10 seconds to read and try to guess the answer and then do so each of the answer by ourselves. And this will prepare you for the exam because basically in the exam, you have 63 questions. Remember, you need to have the strategy for all the exam because a lot of time it's not about the knowledge, you know, it's about strategy. Secretory question, right? 16 minute. That means you have to answer each of these questions in less than a minute. Plus, you have to think about business scenario. I hope the 900 tier will be easier, but you know, you, you got to, you got to mentally learn how to think fast and how to read fast. So my mock question is that purpose. Okay. And I really hope that everyone will participate with me in this phrase because the more you learn, the more you voice up and the more you discuss, it will help you to remember the content. So let's get our clock out. Okay. So let's start. We will go, go to hopefully 2:30. So we will cover all of the quizzes that we left this week, this week and last week. And then tomorrow we will go on the new concept to cover the last section on machine learning studio and also on the algorithm. No, don't, don't say fast. Just kidding. Thank you for the answer. But I have a study, yes, so, block, yes, so give, let's keep everyone a little bit some time to read. So. So guys, I'm sending you the link that contains the materials that we cover last week and also the link to my blog. And again, you know, I think Microsoft did a fantastic job in the prepared their content. So you can skip my blog entirely. Microsoft content is very, very good. I just, I just believe in learning by doing. So that's why I summarized thing on my blog to help me remember things better.
But I would prefer your blog. It is much more direct than the boring Microsoft's blog.
Thank you, thank you, Ali. I'll try my best. I don't know if anyone ever read it. Maybe one day, maybe when I'm, I'll be ahead of something and I will like read my blog, those are the answer.
I mean, I would personally want to email Microsoft to add some images and interactivity in there.
Yeah, I hope so. So, all right, can everyone see the questions on the screen?
Jane, if you allow me, after, after the time, I would like to explain this question.
Okay, okay, sure. So do you want to start the, sorry, did you say you want to explain the questions?
I mean, the answers. I want to explain the answers.
Sure, sure. Fantastic. Please join as much as you want because explaining and discussing really help you remember these quizzes. So, oh, how about maybe you, you can share in the screen and start like 10, 10 second quiz? And that it will be fantastic because I still, I have some short road, so. Okay, let's. Let the, yes, that's all right, let's.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Let me share my screen.
Okay, yes. So let me stop sharing. Okay, then everyone, please pay attention to Ali. He will host this quiz marathon for us.
Let me start the timer to. Jane, let's divide the time. If you, if you divide 63, 63 by 60. So it means that for each question, we will get 1.05 minutes.
I think it could be too long because.
It would be, it would be to go other 60 divided by 63.
Sure, sure. But I think, yeah, it will work. But I just want everyone to like try to, to really cram up and speed up, you know, because in exam, you have like only less than one second, well, one minute to answer the questions. Of course, you have to think about the scenario and the case service and stuff. So that's why I'm trying to crack people up. I like just keep everyone 10 minutes, 10 seconds to like skip through and give the answer. What's one minute good work? So let's try that.
Okay, one, so you are saying that to give everyone 10 seconds to answer one question, right?
Yes, yeah, if possible.
Yes, yes, for sure. So it means that if everyone is going to take 10 seconds and there are 63 questions, then it means 60 seconds.
Yes, and please don't look at the answer. My blog makes it very obvious. Please don't cheat, try to think as this is a mock exam. Okay, I'm ready to start anytime you want. Please don't cheat. Try to think as this is a mock exam. Okay, I'm ready to start anytime you want.
Okay. So total time will be 10.5 minutes, right?
Yes.
Let me start sharing my screen now. Can you guys clearly see my screen?
It's starting. I think I give a couple of more seconds and it will be good. It's still in the screen sharing mode, so. Oh, Ali, I think it's it's taking a little bit long. Oh, oops. Seems like we lost here. It could be due to connection. All right, so sorry about that. Let me start off on my side then. Yeah, must be some internet connection from Ali's side. Okay. Everyone, welcome to the quiz marathon. You will be doing fantastic in the exam after you go to like this much of quiz marathon. So, okay, let's prepare for the test. Question one, arrange the position for the below labels. Come up. So what do you guys think?
Can I speak?
Yeah, please feel free.
So, so I think classification is to group data into different categories. Regression is predictive or more continuous variables. And finally, clustering is to determine natural groupings and patterns in the data sets.
Okay, so let's see the answer. Classification used to classify, yes, you are right. Clustering determine the nature, yes, it no change. So basically, these two change, all right. That's a, that's a good question to warm up. So we will have like a few warm up questions. So these are really basic, you know, but that one you will get in the 900 example also. So they they will be like questions you like, why they put it on the test. But there will be quick tricky questions and those who separate you to get the higher tier. So, okay. Question two. Oh, and some of those, some of the questions in here, there will be like, oh, I'm correct, just a head up. So, all right, 10 seconds, that is. All right, so.
Jane, I'm really sorry. My PC about restarted. I don't know.
That's all right. I'll pass, I'll pass back to you right after this question. So what do you guys think? Which belong to supervised learning?
All of the above, I mean.
No, 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 no. I mean, classification and regression belong to supervised learning and clustering belongs to unsupervised learning.
Okay, let's see the answer. Classification and regression comparison, Ali. So remember, I just want to highlight. In supervised learning, classification and regression, well, in the supervised learning in Azure Machine Learning Studio. You need a label for that, all right? Don't forget, you need a label for supervised learning. I think there will be one of the question below that question on that. But just in case we didn't get to there, remember that you need a label. All right, I'll pass to Ali. Please continue, help me continue this.
Um, Jane, can you please do my favor? Please open your screen. Because if again my PC will go to restart, maybe it will restart after this Zoom meeting. I'm really sorry for my heart of a problem. Jane, I can't hear you.
Okay, sorry, I was muting myself. Okay, let's start with question number three.
It's simply ML studio and cognitive services.
Oh, you, you did? I did? Okay, that's all right. We will have a quick one then. What is the two tier of Azure Machine Learning Service? This will be easy. Guys. So let's see. The, yeah, two tiers of Azure Machine Learning Services is studio and Azure Machine Learning API service. So I note a little bit on the workflow of it. This Azure Machine Learning Studio service, it decide, develop, share, test, you know, on Azure. So you have to like, you have the whole process of the process, process of the machine learning studio. While the API will help you to do, for example, Azure Machine Learning SDK on Python. So I remind that you can go to my clock. There's, there's the one that there's a block on. I'll have to edit it because I was editing this this afternoon. So I'll show you the.
Um, Jane, I have a question.
Yes.
So if there are only two tiers for machine learning. If there are only two tiers for machine learning, that it means that cognitive services comes in Azure ML studio.
Oh, no, no, I meant like there, there are more than two tiers, you know, Azure Machine Learning Service. We have more as I cover in this slide. You know, medium difficulty use, we have more. But then I meant like amongst these four. Which are the one that belong to Azure Machine Learning Service? You are right. I should write a question mark on that. I mean, like amongst farthest, which one belong to the Azure Machine Learning Services? Because cognitive service, there doesn't belong to the Azure Machine Learning Services. They belong to the cognitive service. They are their own categories, see? Azure Air Portfolio Cognitive Service, they are their own. So what I meant in this, Azure Machine Learning Services, which cover Azure Machine Learning Studio. And Azure Machine Learning Visual Experience. Data brick is a, is an independent service from Microsoft. It's basically a notebook like Jupiter, Jupiter lab where you can like write code line by line and explore the data. So. I promise I'll update to the hand this. I'm so. I'm so late on my book, but. Oh, I didn't publicly. Okay, I'll publicly today. But so tonight, you will have a article about Azure Machine Learning Services and tomorrow we'll go through that. Okay. So let's start with question number four. So I show everyone the answer, but let's pretend we didn't see it yet. Okay, this is a scenario.
We need to evaluate trends in fuel price during period of 10 years. The solution was already for unusual.
An anomaly detector.
An anomaly detection, yes.
Awesome, awesome. Very, very good. So remember, we will be test on the decision workload. Precision, oh, I remember. Okay, precision workload. Remember anomaly detection is a feature of, anomaly detection is the feature of decision and precision workload. So if you go back.
Jane, your voice is being gone. Now, now it's there.
Okay, yes, sorry. I'm dealing with some connection. So if you go back on the, if you go back on here. You will see that anomaly detection is a part of decision workload along with the content moderator and personnel. Personnel is a person, no Lisa. And the reason why I didn't cover the decision workload more on anomaly detector. Because it's only under preview, but I got this question, I believe, from the, from the AI 100. Exam, one of the dump online and I still see them put it in there. So I also just put in there just for cautious. I I don't know whether Microsoft will include their preview services. But you know, just in the safe side, I put it in here. All right, and I also include the link so you can see more. All right, let's see. This could be on the Bing service. Can everyone see? I think I should move it down a little bit or no? Okay, let's start. No, I think it's from somewhere else. Pardon?
Bing statistics.
Oh, no, it's a Bing search service. So it's similar to a Google search service.
It should be in insights, maybe the I think so that maybe inside.
Yes, I think this one, it might be more towards like AI 900, AI 100. So let's see the answer. So basically, you have Bing service and you have these below scenario. Yeah, this one more like AI 100. So basically, what would you implement? See, whenever you see the implement word, it will be likely to be. It would likely to not be the AI 900 exam. I think I put it here by mistake. Oh, remove it. But basically, the answer is being statistic. Okay, let's move on. Okay, this one.
So Jane, I also saw this. Jane, I also saw this question on Microsoft Learn on the recommended materials for AI 100.
Oh, okay, then I must have copy from there. Okay, so do you guys want to skip it? Or maybe, yeah, let's spend a few minutes, I mean, two seconds on that, then we can move to others. Yeah, must, I must have copied a few questions that I got error from Microsoft, so that I can remind myself.
Sorry, I meant the one for, sorry, Jane, I meant the one for Bing statistics.
Oh, this one on Microsoft Learn? This one?
Yeah, yeah. So I think it's still relevant. It's still relevant for here and there. That's what I meant.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, I didn't know that. Yeah, because I was searching for Microsoft them and I saw this. So, but then I really, really highly want to see this on the AI 900. Just because it asks for implementation. And if you see the exam here, there's no, there is no path where they ask for implementation. Basically, I 900 more like describe, you know, describe, identify. And you can see that, that is the common feature with all the 900 here, where you like, just need to know the concept. So don't worry, don't worry about it. So. Okay, question number.
All of the above. I would go for all of the above.
Good, good job. Okay, let's see. For customer prediction analytics, which cloud machine learning service Microsoft offer? Yes, oh, the above. Because we have machine learning as service. You see in cloud, we have a lot of a service. So you can see like infrastructure as service, software as service. Platform as service. It's all like it all have something like P A S S thing. This brief, the suffix letters. So remember, when you go on cloud, there's a lot of things as a service related that. And even just a few weeks ago, I have learned this term. And and I cannot go to the lens in explaining to you guys about that. Because I'm still learning this myself and also it's not really relevant to AI 900. But I just want to raise the concept that. On cloud, instead of do things yourself and thinking of this like an infrastructure on prem, on premise. Think of it as as services where things are packaged and given to you as an end user. So that you don't have to do much work. Or it's customizable. You can do a lot of work or you can do little work. Depends on what is used. So the concept that I learned just this week is catching as service. I believe I was, yes, catch as service, sorry, catch as service. So it's about. Cloud infrastructure and stuff. So if you are interested, definitely check it out. It's very, it's very interesting. Okay, that one feature that I want to keep everyone. Concepts in the Azure and cloud platform. Okay, question number seven. Okay, what do you guys think? Which one? B? Okay, I hear I be, anyone vote for B?
I would go for Azure ML, B. I would go for B.
Okay, I hear B. Okay, anyone go for C? C is alone here. Any vote for it? Okay, I don't hear anyone. So let's see the answer. Answer is B. Why? Why we have B? Oh, I don't. I said, okay, let me answer this one. You are right, people who select me, because basically, it go back to here. This is a very, very important slide. Like you can forget a lot of things that I wrote here. But please remember this slide is the core concept that Microsoft want to introduce to people. You know, medium to difficult Azure Machine Learning Service. Why? Why? Yeah. I have to.
Can I ask?
Yes, yes, please.
So in that question, it was written, AI, right? Can you show me the question? Yeah.
Yes.
AI solution, right? So is it also AI, isn't it related to cognitive service? Because the slide which you just shown, can you go back to your presentation?
This, oh, this.
Yeah, see here you said easy to use cognitive services, board services. So it is AI related, right?
No, actually, everything in here is AI related. So to to use AI service on the Azure, you know, you have all of these options to choose from. And and many more. You you have like much, much more, but these. You, you have like much, much more, but these are like things that you might get in the test, mainly like 90%, the test could be about this stuff, so, and mostly at least because it's a fundamental.
From Jane, may I answer too?
Yes, yes, sure, please.
Um, it's very simple, if you look at the words, it says that you want to use for prediction. Now, regression is a classic example for only machine learning. You don't need extra services for it. If you focus on the word, just predictive analytics. So it comes with prediction and prediction is means regression. So regression comes under the hood of machine learning, so that's why I selected machine learning. And why not AutoML? Because company wants to deploy a solution, but it, it isn't stated anywhere that company wants to deploy an automatic solution. So the best part will be the Azure ML, because AutoML is definitely, I personally believe so, is going to be definitely expensive than ML services. Because AutoML will do all the work itself, rather than you have to place up ML engineer to do things by himself or herself.
Okay, okay.
And also, I want to raise the issue with the name.
Yes, brother.
Yeah, sorry, I just want, one shot input, so I want to raise the issue with the naming. So Azure Machine Learning Service, it's actually a service for Microsoft, it's not, it's not a standalone work, it's actually a service. So just Yes, okay, I'll, please ask question for Ali, I think there was one question for you.
I, I just wanted to want, I think AutoML would have been correct as well, because it can help to build tests and, and deploy, however, I think it's still not the best answer, because machine learning service has a designer and the auto ML capabilities. So that's why I went for the answer B, is the most correct answer.
I would highly prefer to understand and hear your answer, but it was, but there was very cluttering in it. So it would be very beneficial if you write it down in a very concise way possible in the chat, so that everyone can benefit from it.
Okay, everyone, so let me go back a little bit on the two main concept, the two main service that we will be tested on. And can everyone see my screen all right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so again, yes, so we have cognitive service. Yes, well, I think of it's in the setup pre-train API and some, there are some portal services, but mainly is API. So they, so the models are pre-trained, you know, and basically, you just need to call the API to apply it to your set of data. While Azure Machine Learning is where you have to build, to train, to deploy your model, so it's the whole pipeline, it's a whole process, you cannot skip on anything. You have to build things from the crowd and of course, why is, why you have to build everything your own and it still be the medium too easy? Because Azure Machine Learning Studio offer you the drag and drop service, as you can see in some of the demo in the class. So remember this, if you have to build a trend to deploy your own model, Azure Machine Learning is a service, it's not, it's not a standalone name that we use. It's a whole name for Microsoft. Azure Cognitive Service, where you have the pre-trained model, you call the API, you apply it in your dataset, you call it work. Okay, so I hope that helped explain the answer. Okay, let me see. Okay, yes, please, also, if you have more questions on that, be chat on the chat and now I'll answer it. Is everyone clear on the difference between the cognitive and the Azure Machine Learning? It's a fundamental knowledge that please take a look at it, because it will be the core of our exam. You guys all right, Pranayya, Sagar, Kennedy, even?
Yes, he.
Okay, so the block that I'm showing is the part one, I think, what did I write? Yes, this is where I introduce everyone briefly on the, oh, yes, here you see the workflow, trending package, validate, deploy, monitor, so that is the characteristic of Azure Machine Learning Service. And yeah, this is a very, it's a very good content for you to quickly read on these two. Okay, let me let me continue. Okay, question number eight. Okay, what is the cloud service that you, oh, it's easy.
You just, you just.
Yes, okay, let's keep this, Azure Machine Learning Service. Yeah, so why is not the Azure Machine Learning Studio? Because it's the older product that offers standalone drag and drop experience. And I think I haven't go through all of the labs in our, in our class, but I think in, at least in a few of them, there is a drag and drop service. So what Microsoft recommend? Use Azure Machine Learning Studio for the widest range of cutting-edge machine learning tools. So remember, if you want drag and drop studio, if you want something else, Azure Machine Learning. If you want, if you want something quick, you don't have the expertise in machine learning. You know, you still want to use machine learning, but you don't have equities on that, use cognitive service. So that, those are those services that Microsoft categorized out for us. Okay, next question nine. Okay, Azure Machine Learning Service does not support open source technology. True or false?
False.
False.
False, okay, let's see the answer. False, yes, machine learning integrate with open source like Git and MLflow. By the way, MLflow is an open source to, I think, for control and machine learning pipeline. I, I'm going to try it next week, I, I heard like a lot of mixed reviews, some say it's fantastic and some say it sucks. So if you guys have experience with that, let me know, I'm going to, to have to use it on my distributed system next week. So some warning ahead would be a good, would be a good help for me. Okay, so let's go to question 11. What is, oh, I just, I just Okay, please ask me, this one should be quick, should take like two second. Tell me, what is the characteristic of Machine Learning Studio?
The question is, what is not a characteristic?
Well, you know, like, yeah, that's ambrosy, but if I talk about Machine Learning Studio, what would you think first thing?
Not a characteristic.
Yeah.
Code free, no, no, it's code free.
Code free, maybe, let's see, what else?
No, no, it's not code free, because cognitive services are code free. In ML Studio, we have to write down the code, right? We have to give us our own, own models.
We will see, so I hear A, I hear B, anyone go to GPU, CPU support? Let's see. Property, okay, that's good one. Anyone go for web service format?
No.
Come on, come on, remember, there's one other options. Remember, I started saying from the first, there one option where you see everything is correct, what is our option? Okay, let's see. Oh, this D.
Yeah.
What, oh, hang on, what is not a characteristic? That is a tricky question, where I didn't bold it, but not, no one is reading it and I can't think, see, right? Okay.
I told, I told you, I personally told you that not is written there.
Yes, see, I, that's why I keep this block, because even me, whenever I redo it, I still cut it wrong. Yes, property. What is property, basically? It doesn't change.
It's GPU and CPU support.
Yes.
Yeah, let's go. Yes. See. Property, that mean you can, you cannot customize, cannot customize this. So Azure Machine Learning Studio, you cannot customize. Azure Machine Learning, you can customize, you can have a lot of different support, you can have GPU and CPU support. So this, this one, I think, is a very different between the studio and the machine learning. So remember, the studio is the classic and the older version, and the machine learning is the newer version. If you want more support, more customized, go for this. Oh, and remember, this one require enterprise workspace, you cannot use it for free, you cannot use it on your free account, enterprise workspace. Okay, let's go to question. Yes.
Kennedy, Kennedy has requested that if you have time, please share a minute or two about your, your insights, a minute or two about MLflow.
Actually, I have one doubt also. One doubt, I don't think is answer for this moment.
Sorry, can, can you guys help me chat it again? I, I hear very lacking noise, I'm not sure from my part, from the network issue. Oh. Jane, at the end of lesson, maybe can you share a minute about MLflow? Yeah, sure, I can try to share as much as I could, but but yeah, but I'm still learning about it. So I'll, yeah, definitely, I'll spare a few minutes to talk about MLflow for you guys, but then I'm still in the process of learning it. So, and you know, the guys in my work is still in the process of installing it, so I'll have to find it out in the next couple of weeks.
So
I'll share with you. Yeah, so basically, my task for the next few weeks at my workplace is translate a data science script from Python to PySpark, you know, because you, you cannot run Python on the distributed system. So you need to run it on Spark, and basically, a lot of where you write in Python, you cannot use it distribute the system. So one way I'm thinking of apply to help me easy to translate and control the script is through MLflow. And I'll have some introduce for you guys, maybe like five, 10 minutes after we go through the quiz. So everyone can know about the tool. I participate in the data, data brick and the SPAC submit, and I heard a lot of good things about it. But then basically, some of my friends who specialize in the field in machine learning, they say like, don't use MLflow, it's terrible, it sucks and everything. So I just wonder if you guys have experienced with it, because you know, head up is always the good things. Because with those tools, there, there could be the areas where they are terrible, there could be areas where they are fantastic to apply. So yes, thank you, Sagar, for clearing the information, so question, oh, this question, okay, just go to this quickly. You, you need to create a resource for every Azure Machine Learning workspace, true. Don't forget, create resource, that is how Azure structure work. You always need to create resource for everything that you start to do with. Even like with cognitive service, computer vision, if you go through my quiz here, my quiz is here, a lot of questions will be about creating resource and which one you choose. And I think it will be very close to the exam, because that also what I heard from other people, you will test on the input, like what, what input you choose and you will test on the resource, what resource you choose to provision it. It, it just concept, you don't need to provision it, but at least you need to know like what you need to choose. Because I think with the 900 tier, a lot of people have issue with building, so that's why they want to emphasize this. So, okay.
You always have issues with billing in every cloud solution.
Yes, building on cloudy hell, I, yeah, even me, like, I make mistakes too, so, yeah. You, you alone, but before learning, it's, it's good to use company account, right? Okay, so does computer vision works on video frames, yes or no?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes. Yes, so basically, we, last week, we have talked about for video, we have video indexing, video indexer. However, computer vision, remember, you see the name of the service, it's not the, it's not a standalone concept, computer vision also work on video. You are right, Ali, is you can extract one of the frame from the video content, okay. So basically, it will analyze frame by frame and what it means. What is some examples of computer vision workloads? More than one answer, correct? Okay. Okay, let's.
The, the for sure.
B, D, and C.
B, D, and C, yes, I hear B, D, C. Any other question, any other answer?
A, B, D.
A, B, D, yes.
Wait, 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 guys, I mean, why indexing videos? Because there's a separate video indexer for it, right?
Yes, but then for this, right? Which one? Indexing, okay, oh, that's all right, we can check on the answer, so I hear B, C, D, A, B, D. Anyone else go to A, B, C, D? Anyone else to just see? Okay, let's see. A, B is the correct one, C and the C for content moderator and D for video indexer. So indexing with the only for video indexer. Did I miss someone? Oh, I'm still online, okay, that's good, because I was having the power, the shortage for a few second, so.